Two, one, you are last.
Great, well, thank you and welcome. I'll call to order the select board meeting for Monday, November 1st. Before we get started tonight, I do just want to make a public thank you to John and all of the crew in Rockport for the Herculean efforts that occurred yesterday during a time where I know we knew we were going to get rain, but I don't think we had any, any indication as to what was about to happen. So the fact that all of our roads were passable last night after a very, very long night. We have resident here who was trapped on the mountain, but certainly want to thank you and our department heads and everybody that came together yesterday. I know there's still a lot of work to be done, and I know that we will have some impacts from this probably for a while, but just thank you. Thank you for your leadership and thank you for getting us through yesterday, and we will band together and get through whatever we got to get through as a result of it. But thank you very much. And with that, I'll turn it to you. I'm sure you have a very interesting town manager report to give us this evening.
It's been quiet. How much is going on?
It's been so quiet. As I, as I read your town manager report on Friday versus how I read it again today, it's quite, quite a difference there.
Two and a half pages is not a whole lot of what matters right now, you know?
So I'll turn it to you, John.
Thank you. Yeah, so I won't go through the report because it's all available online. Everyone can read through that. Obviously, the most important thing that's, that's pressing is the big storm that we ran into Sunday night. Of course, the weather, there were, there had been preparations and, and all of our departments were prepared to go out. I don't think it was the type of event we expected. You know, traditionally, we're starting to see a lot of these big blowdown events with a lot of wind and power outages. We were just talking about that beforehand. This obviously was a very different event. And I talked with the meteorologist from New Center, Maine. They're actually doing a story on our situation that will run right now, but everyone's watching us, obviously, instead of, instead of Channel Six. So, but we're talking about this and he's like, you know, the models didn't expect it, you know, but would this happen? It's beyond my pay grade. But in any event, it became a far worse storm than we anticipated, even with all the preparations. You know, I was, the girl soccer game was at the, at the field at the high school. The rain was coming sideways. And I'm thinking, I thought this wasn't supposed to start until later. And then, of course, we had that big break and thinking, oh, well, maybe we missed it. Sadly, we didn't. So obviously, just to recap, we have damage predominantly in West Rockport. We have, obviously Robinson Drive is the one that everyone saw the pictures and it's unbelievable. All of our calls really started around two, three o'clock in the morning, and then things just started ramping up and ramping up. And we have, there's a sheriff's deputy that lives up on Pine Bray. He actually had to, he, had he left at the normal time, he decided to wait because of the storm. He wouldn't have known, and who knows what could have happened with that water washing.
Really? We're, we're, we're very, very fortunate. We didn't have any injuries.
Absolutely. Yeah. So that's the, you know, there's damage, there's financial, you know, implications for the town and for our residents as a result, but thank goodness, you know, we really escaped on that side of it. So obviously Robinson Drive is the one most people are familiar with. In that situation, we were unsure if even the culvert was still there. There was so much water on that, where the, where the road existed previously. We didn't even know that the culvert was there by the time we got to noon, even with all that water rushing, until it had come down a little bit, and then they were able to, okay, I think we can put a pipe in and put a second overflow pipe. And then they obviously threw a lot of heavy rock and riprap in that hole. And, you know, by the time six, six thirty-ish, we had a road that was done. And so we had Mike, Mike Young, our Public Works Director, was, was there on scene. Will Gartley was there. He came out and, and it came to help out. You know, Bill Lane, as part of the fire department, also worked with Gartley Dorsky, so he was on scene. I mean, we couldn't have asked for a better range for us there. Glenn was in the excavator, but then once some of the work around town, we had other, other crew come in from around our public works department to really get this done. Because what people don't understand perhaps is that Robinson Drive is the one way in and one way out for almost 30 homes in that section of, of our community. So there was , you know, we, there were kids coming out with the costumes and.
[laughing]
Training, you know, so they stayed close to the neighborhood this year. But, so we had that, obviously, and that's the one everyone's seen. But there's a lot of damage elsewhere. We had obviously a lot of flooding. West Street Extension was closed for an extended period of time. Park Street, Route 17 by Grassy Pond. Route 90 was wet, but I don't think we actually ever got closing it. But, you know, again, I think the, probably the worst, single worst road aside from obviously Robinson Drive is Mount Pleasant. If you haven't had a chance to get up there and take a look, it's.
Which was just repaved.
Just paved, yes.
Yes.
So, you know, somewhat the kiss of death, I suppose. And apparently, this happened the last time we paved. Maggie was telling me that, that this happened before. So apparently, it's just not meant to be, right, right. I, funny, I sent a text to the contractor and I said, do you have a warranty for this road?
We should be under warranty.
Unfortunately, it wasn't. He, he, he didn't laugh on that one.
And I don't know where we got all of our materials from yesterday in a short order, but whoever, whoever that partner is that brought in the giant rocks and whatever on a Sunday.
Right. Overlock was very helpful in this regard. They, but unfortunately, they had a mechanical issue. JBI was, was instrumental in getting a lot of that material added our way. We were hauling it with our own trucks, performance paving, worked with us to get another truck. So we have, again, another big truck. But again, that was, we had one road we were working. We're also hitting all these other spots as well. So a lot of logistics to deal with. So as we sit here today, Public Works was going out and looking at some of those smaller spots to repair. You know, I think Mount Pleasant is still being worked on. It will continue to be worked on. It takes some time. And we're truly trying to get a list of all of our spots, photographs, equipment used, the amount of detail that FEMA would require, should we be able to apply for reimbursement, is unbelievable. You know, how many cc's the, the wood chipper is? What's the blade, you know, what, what's your bar on, on the, on the, on your chainsaw? I mean, it's, they want to know, they want to know who you used, who used it, how long they used it. So there's a lot of work that we need to do.
I think it's important too, John, probably if we have other places, we, there, there could be some damage we don't know about.
Absolutely.
So if there is anyone out there who knows, they should contact us because we, you know, we can't be, we like to think we can be everywhere. We can't. So I think it's important if there is more damage that people let us know.
Absolutely. Yeah, no doubt. And, and as you said, we're starting to see more. We just had a sinkhole on South Street. There was a, a bit of a landslide of sorts, about 25-foot section on Warrenton Street towards the beach.
Like I said, I wouldn't be surprised if we see more of that because there was a lot of water running through yesterday.
So it's, I think we are the, at the center of the worst right here, here in Rockport. I think we take the title, unfortunately, on this one. But, you know, I think we're going to do our part to try to get all the documented. But again, we need to have that $2.2 million from the state. Otherwise, you know, we're in a, we're in a tough, we're a real pickle financially. And that's, you know, why you have unassigned fund balance and, and the like. So it's, it's these worst-case scenarios where you don't end up with FEMA money. Now the town is responsible to repair that Robinson Drive road. And we're talking about half a million to a million dollars. I mean, yeah, we can, you know, bond it. We can do different things, but that's real money that we weren't anticipating and haven't spent so soon. So I want to say credit to, just to finish the point, I just want to credit, you know, Mike Young, all of our crew of Public Works, Abby Leonard, and, and was down here at the harbor all, all day. We did lose one boat that sunk. Dinghies wet. I, I've got a lot of video of some crazy, you know.
It was insane.
Wave situations going on the harbor.
It was insane, yeah.
Just bizarre stuff going on. You know, though, I think Randy in the police department, I saw Travis out. He was checking all the roads. Jason, our volunteer fire department. I mean, we, we were well-served.
I don't know how many, I don't know how many basements we had, were pumped yesterday, but I know that there were a lot of calls for them.
More than we had pumps. We have nine pumps.
Yeah.
And we had more basements than we have pumps. And Jason and I were talking about this today, and he said, well, I wish we had more pumps. I said, how many more pumps? I mean, you can't, unfortunately, you can't plan for every eventuality, but, and of course, you know, our neighbors were also, Hope was having a lot of damage, Cameron had a lot of damage. So this was an all-hands-on-deck situation. So I want to thank all those guys that spent their Sunday. I mean, as you said, Michelle, I mean, this was a, this is when, you know, this is when you need town government. This is when you need to come through for everybody. And so I was really, I was really, you know, pleased with how we came through this. There's lessons from it.
Sure.
We're gonna, all of us are gonna sit down later this week, once we get through the election tomorrow.
Right. Exactly, right.
You know, right, you've got an election going on.
Timing, great timing.
But all of us to sit down and talk about this. Like, how can you do this better? Is there a better way for us to operate?
Listen, there's always ways to Monday morning quarterback, right? So I mean, I think that, don't, don't beat up on yourselves. I mean, there's so much to be thankful for and so much hard work that happened. I mean, I think, I think the debriefing and the planning going forward is great to put us in a situation where if we ever have this happen again, but I mean, you know, what happened yesterday, the fact that everybody pulled together like that is, is pretty, pretty wonderful.
So is insurance at all a factor in any of this, or?
No, not really. No. I mean, this is an act of God. So it's a hundred-year storm. So, you know, I met, talked with a couple of residents today, and there's not really anything that we can be reasonably expected to have foreseen or have prepared for in advance of, of an event like this because it is kind of outside that, that norm. So.
So that's good.
That's good for us in terms of our exposure. Yeah. I mean, I, I, I think we are doing, we've done everything we can to provide a safe circumstance and then obviously do what we can, once we're aware of damage, to make aware. Honestly, if there's, you know, if there is damage, we don't have to repair that within the 24 to 40, you know, between that 48-hour window, but we have to make sure we put a cone there so people know, hey, this is an issue here. So our, our responsibility, our liability is really to make sure, okay, you've called about this. This is a cone. Everyone be careful about this. And then we have time, you know, reasonable time within that to repair and replace as needed.
But the town doesn't have insurance that would cover a half million, million-dollar road.
Oh, no. No, no.
Unfortunately.
Federal government, you would hope, is our insurance in that regard.
And that's what you're.
And then you, then you have that 80/20, you know, there's the split with federal and state, and that FEMA process is exhaustive and unbelievable. But what it also allows you to do, and what we have right now is a temporary solution for Robinson Drive. I mean, that's about a six-month solution. So by the time we get back to the spring, we need to have something hard that will, that will last time. And there's still debate about what that looks like. Is it a big box culvert? Is it, you know, more of a span, like a bridge? There's, you know, we've got our best and brightest working on that. Then they'll tell me because I've got them on the.
No, what needs to be done?
But, but, yeah, we'll, yeah.
Right, once they figure out what went wrong with what we had.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah. So it's, but, you know, we, we, there's a couple culverts that are, that are called out in our, in our capital improvement plan, which has just gone live, I think, right? And this is one of them, ironically enough. So, so we're, I, I think the amount is less on that because a storm like this, then obviously causes you to realize you needed, to use a Jaws reference, we need a bigger boat, right? We need a bigger, a bigger culvert or a bigger box culvert or, or a bridge to deal with these, these water issues. And so even with wastewater, talking with, with Nate today, these events, they're obviously costly, but they also help us to future-proof what we can do in the next. So that way, we don't, we are, we aren't running into this issue on that particular stretch of road again. That doesn't mean West Street is perfect or, you know, Warrenton Street or these other issues, but, but at least that particular is solved. And if we are able to get the funding, we'll do it right. We'll be able to do it right as opposed to, you know, trying to.
Fixing it for now.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and that'll be the ongoing challenge, won't it, with climate change and the more ferocious storms.
Exactly.
Who's keeping the infrastructure functioning.
Yeah, absolutely. The cost, tremendous.
All right, anything else? I mean, it's quite, it's been quiet for you, you know?
No, that's, that's all I can handle, I think.
I wanted to just mention a few things off of John's report. I guess I want to just echo, I'm very supportive of the notion of our fire departments working regionally, sort of, I know it's, you mentioned that in the report.
Oh, yeah.
At the last county commission, the second to the last county commissioners hearing, there was quite a bit of discussion at that point, too, of the importance of regionalizing. So I just wanted to.
Oh, great.
Support that effort. And then I have a question for you on the bridge. Because do you know what our timing is? Like, because various citizens want to be engaged in that. But, and we obviously want to get in there when there's still time to influence what DOT is doing. Do you have a sense of what that timeframe looks like, when we can have input?
I, I think that process will start this winter. There was a very preliminary meeting, which was really understanding the parameters of our town and who the stakeholders are and how that works. That was back in August. And then the next phase was for them to really put some more serious, you know, thought into this project, and then to return this winter to the community and have more of a dialogue with us. They really, we haven't had any sort of dialogue in terms of what does it look like? Where does it go? You know, it was.
What would we like to see?
Yeah, we have, that hasn't occurred, but the intention is that they want to come back and ask those questions of us.
So we might want to be ready with some thoughts based on.
And they're, and they're, and then they also, I should also say, I forgot to mention this, that there, there's also a public process that they include as part of their efforts as well. So, right, we could shape, what we would, what we as the town want, but there's also, I think, part of their process to engage and invite just citizens in general to be a part of, you know, their dialogue. So, yeah. So that's, but yeah, I think that's coming, that's absolutely coming this winter. Yeah.
And I do not want to put you on the spot about Holiday on the Harbor, but what about fireworks?
Well, I was going to mention it to Abby Sunday, but I thought that was probably too.
Probably not the good time, right?
I probably shouldn't have. The, the plan is, the committee needs to meet, and so how, have a committee.
Haven't decided, that's.
I'll let the committee meet, but there is interest on all sides to at least haul off a, a Holiday on the Harbor with fireworks show extravaganza. I mean, if Big Al is going to keep his fireworks shop open.
Then we're going to have to do business.
I mean, how can we ignore this?
Right, right. We'd have to do business.
So, so anyway, yeah, so that's, but again, there's more details and we have.
But I was fine with that.
But this is the last one before you guys would have your next meeting. So that's why I want to put it in here that it's still.
It's in the planning stages that we will do something.
Yeah, that's the plan. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments for John? No? Okay. Any public input to non-agenda items? Seeing none. Any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none. We will move to the consent agenda. We have a resignation from the Rockport Parks and Beautification, Sandy Herbert. So thank you, Sandy, for your participation. And we also have the meetings from, the meeting minutes from October 12th.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Just please get a card off to Sandy on that.
I believe probably Diane has probably already done that, but we'll make sure that that gets.
Usually happens, but it doesn't hurt to say it again.
I, I appreciate it. As long as it's going on, we can use.
And that's right. That's one reminder.
Thank you.
And thank you, Sandy. All in favor?
Upstate.
Upstate?
Yeah, west.
Okay. Moving on, we will go to our action items. We do have a committee application for Tammy. Is it Krul?
Open up, yes.
All right. Well, welcome, Tammy. Do you want to come up and tell us a little bit about yourself? This is for the Recreation Committee as an alternate.
Yes, I was asked to participate on the Marsh Jones Recreation Committee just because of my experience with youth development or youth sport development. And as everybody, I think, already knows, I own the pitch in Warren, with my husband. And so we've been here for about eight years in this community, but prior to that, we managed Dutch Soccer Academy for 20 years. So we have a lot of experience in different communities with sport management. And so I'd like to offer my expertise, or not expertise, but my experience in what I've, not just working here in this community, but also other communities in the Bangor area and especially in Roosted County. That's where I'm originally from. So I have a lot of different perspectives from different communities on the importance of fields and, and so forth.
That's great. We really appreciate you stepping up to do that. You will be a fantastic addition. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, can I get a motion?
I move the board approve the committee application from Tammy Krul for the Recreation Committee as an alternate with term ending June 30, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We have a change in a committee for Marilyn McWilliams, an alternate to a regular member for the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee. With Sandy leaving, that opened up that position.
I move the board approve Marilyn McWilliams' move from alternate to regular member on the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee, keeping her same term ending June 30, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Great, unanimous. Thank you very much. Marilyn? All right, with that, we will go on to our bylaws. John, did you want to just give us a quick update on these?
Yeah, this, very quickly, the only major change in all three of these is really to incorporate the language relating to the remote participation policy. So there, well, apart from that, there really aren't any changes. The, the other thing is that the purpose and scope was reviewed of all of these. So that was a big thing that we had discussed as part of this community, committee review, make sure to look at that. And thankfully, we have done that. There's some other committees that need a little bit more time. And we're, we went through, at our department head meeting last week, we went through that list. And so we're trying to winnow everybody through. The first, the first is the bylaws, and then we, then we get to the work plan, the budget. So we're, everyone's working in that direction ever so slowly, but we're getting there. So it's good work.
All right. So the amendments are the Rockport Parks and Beautification, Conservation Commission Committee, and the Harbor Committee. So can we get a motion?
I move the board approve the amendments to the Rockport Parks and Beautification, Conservation Commission Committee, and Harbor Committee bylaws as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Okay. 22. Okay. Moving on, we have a discussion item this evening from Carrie regarding the KRT appraisal price proposal. Come on up, Carrie.
Okay. Nice to see you all again.
Missed it.
In a diminished capacity, I'm happy to say.
Who knows you missed sitting over there, Carrie? Come on.
After the last couple days.
I look at John. I do feel a little guilt. So I believe, I, I didn't see your package. Was the memo in there?
There is a memo in our packet.
Okay. So, so just a little bit of background. We have always certified at 100%. And 100% means that citizens get, on the homestead exemption, for example, they get $25,000. The veterans exemption, they get $6,000. There's a reduction from their taxable value. As, as, this year, we certified at 99%. It was the first time we were off 100. And so the homestead exemption was $24,750. Veterans, I forget what the number was, but it was just a little bit under $6,000. So this is where, now, we're in a very hot real estate market. And I have with me the state valuation for the upcoming year, and they've got us at 88%. Now, it lags reality by two years.
Can I stop you, Carrie? Because I've really tried to understand this, and I have no idea what it means to certify at 100%.
Absolutely, sure. So first of all, the ratio is the assessed value divided by the sales price.
Okay.
I track that all the time. I get monthly reports. Actually, now that it's online, we, we get it almost daily. And the first thing I do is divi, is do that division and come up with the ratio. And so we want to be, the constitution requires that we be at market value. And so that would mean a ratio of 100%, ideally.
So every time a house sells for more than what you've appraised it for?
We are.
Exactly. That's a lower ratio, right.
Which right now is.
I don't think a house sells, has a house ever sold around here in the last year for what it was appraised?
No, not in the last couple of years, no. Certainly not since COVID. I mean, you know, when COVID happened, assessors would get together and be scared to death that the bottom was going to fall out of the market. We'd have to raise mill rates and all that kind of stuff. And the opposite happened, for what economists we are. But, I mean, now, you know, we do these, we, we look at the sales that come in, and we've got a ratio of 57%, of 72%, 64. It's nuts.
And so if we are not at that 100%, we do not get.
100% of revenue sharing.
100% of the revenue share.
Right. And 100% of anything that is based on our valuation.
Okay.
So revenue sharing is the big one. There's other reimbursements like for Betty and for tree growth and things like this that the state reimburses us based on our valuation. It's reduced by our certified ratio. So the difference between our actual ratio and the certified ratio is worth explaining. We get to add 10% to our real ratio. So this year, our real ratio was 90%. 10% of 90% is nine, so I was able to certify at 99%.
I see.
Okay.
Okay? And one of the reasons for that is so that our, our ratio doesn't jump up and down with every win in the market. So we can, you know, I, I've always shot for ratios in the 90s. And that would allow me to certify at 100, no matter what our real ratio was. But we dipped down to 90, and, and that's why we wound up with 99%.
So you said the estimate for next year is 88?
Correct.
Which would put us at 98? Or 97? Because you get nine.
Well, you add eight to that.
Oh, okay.
Right? So that, that puts us at 97%, right? Eight plus, eight, no, I'm sorry, 96%.
8.8% maybe.
96%, right? Okay. So I, I put together, actually, to confuse you a little more, I put together a little math. If I can just hand you out.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Sure. What this is, we do, my biggest tool to mark how we are is a sales ratio study because we do everything by averaging. And so we average the whole town, we average single-family homes, we average condos. And so what I've given you here, and we typically, when we don't have a lot of sales, we go back two years. If we have enough sales, we just go back one. So what I have here for you is sales beginning with April 1st, 2019 to the present. And the next column is April 1st, that goes back, starting at April 1st, 2020 to the present. So when we do the two-year average, for example, of the whole town, which is 211 sales, we have a median of 80%. The median average is the one we typically use because it's less affected by outliers. That's the middle number. There are just as many values above 80% as there are below 80%. So, but, well, we, we look at them all, but that's the one that's the most important. So 80%, 82% mean, the weighted mean is 80%. The weighted mean is the total, the sum of all sales, I'm sorry, the sum of all assessed values divided by the sum of all sales. That's the weighted mean. We come up with the deviation. That's the difference from each sale, one to the next, the incremental difference. We come up with an average for that. That gives us a quality, the COD is our quality rating, coefficient of dispersion, but that's quality rating. And that is state mandated to be 20 or less. So 17.25 is high, but it's not terrible. And then the PRD is the, so the COD is a measure of horizontal equity. The PRD is a measure of vertical equity. That's the price differential. And that's 102, allowable is .98 to 1.03. And what these tell us is the equity from the high-value to the low-value homes, which, if any, if it's out of skew, that would mean that the higher-value homes are contributing more percentage-wise than the lower value or vice versa. So that's what we track by that, that price rate differential. So, so looking at, so that, I gave you the, for, since two years, but we had plenty of sales just in this one year. So look at 4-1, 2020 on all residential. We had 141 qualified sales. Now, qualified sales means that it was an arms-length transaction. People didn't know each other. There was no, you know, the person selling the house wasn't in a hurry to get out of town because of a job, or somebody's death, or something like that. And the people buying the property were also not under any undue stress. So that's a, a qualified sale. So, and we tip. So that's a, um, a quali, qualified sale. So, and we typically have half of the sales are unqualified, half are qualified. So to give you an idea what the volume rea, really is.
Half are unqualified.
Yes. Oh, yeah, because so many sales happen between family members, or it's a bank sale or something like that. So we had 141, um, qualified sales. That ratio, so that, and we're talking about April 1st, 2020 to the present, that median ratio is 76%. The mean is 78, weighted mean 76. And, and why this is all important, the 76, 78, it shows that we're, our, our assessments are of good quality. They're not all over the place. So no matter how we measure the average, we're coming out in the same area. And, and so now we take, so we take that, so next, next year, we're 88%. The year after that, we're going to be 78%. And now we add, uh, 10% to that, so that's 7.8 to 7%. And, you know, now we're down in the mid-80s.
That's, we can't, yeah.
So, so now people are only getting whatever portion of, of $25,000 that is for the homestead. We're only getting that portion of the, of the, um, revenue sharing. And so it's, it's important that we do two things. One is that we have equity across all property types. So that everybody, if, if we're, if we're only going to be at 72%, everybody should be at 72%. Uh, and the other thing is, we have to have our overall ratio wherever we're comfortable. And what I mean by that is, it's best to certify at 100%, but we don't have to. The state requires we be somewhere between 70 and 110. If we're 110, by the way, we don't get more than $25,000 for a homestead.
Right.
So there's no benefit, okay.
Yep. So, uh, and the rest of these columns show, I broke down the all residential into single-family homes and condos. This is the way the state breaks it down as well. And, and when we do, um, adjustments, we go down even further. We look at neighborhoods, we look at maps, we look at freshwater, saltwater, no water, mountain view, that's, we break it down into as many strata as we have data to make a reasonable judgment from. So, so when we look, now, I did quickly, and I wrote it down in my handwriting, just to give you an example of that. If I can find, did I give you any, does anybody have something with chicken scrawl on it?
No, we don't.
Other than the one I just wrote?
Right.
And nobody has my cheat sheet? Okay. Well, what I did was, I did a quick neighborhood study. Neighborhood 50 is an average neighborhood. And in there, the ratio came out to, I think it was 72 or 73%. And that's also, oh, here we go. The median was 73%. We had 53 sales in neighborhood 50, qualified sales. The median was 73, the mean was 77, the weighted mean was 75. The quality rating was 20.73. So now we're just over the threshold where it's acceptable. And the PRD was 103.
Which is right at the limit, right?
Which is, which is beyond that limit too. So that's, that's not great, not awful, but not great. Neighborhood 9, now, so neighborhood 50 is like, you see, your average neighborhood. It's not out in rural area, it's not on the ocean, it's just an average kind of neighborhood. And we have a few neighborhood 50s throughout Rockport. Neighborhood 90s are all ocean-influenced, some with views of oceans, some right on. And there, we have a median of 88%. And a mean of 88, and a weighted mean of 84, and a quality rating of 16.84. So what, what we do when we equalize is we take that 73 and that 88, and we make them equal.
What did you, the last number you read out, 16?
16.84.
And what was that?
That was the quality rating.
Oh, okay.
And so to, one of the, one of the things that you call a revaluation is an equalization. And so we might decide that we're, we would like to be, let's just, let's say 88%. That's where we want the whole town to be. So we wouldn't touch neighborhood 90.
So can I just interrupt?
Yeah, yeah.
Does that mean that neighborhood 90 is actually paying more? Let's see, if you wanted to talk about your fair share of taxes.
Right.
90 is actually paying a little more.
Exactly.
Versus neighborhood 50.
Exactly.
Who's undervalued.
Right. Which is, which is why, I'll get, that'll be part two. Please remember, remind me about part two.
Okay.
Because that, that's less important than part one, and I might forget it. So we, so we, we lift or bring down all boats until we get to, everybody's at the same number, and that's, and that's equalizing. And as, now, last time we did this was 2015. And so we're six years out, and this is a pretty normal drift. And the fact that the numbers are clu, clustered as they are is pretty, is pretty good. And, and also, don't forget, I just broke out neighborhoods. These came out of the same stats that we just read before, where everybody was copacetic. You know, so, so it's, it's, it's how you drill down, um, and, and what it all means. And like I said, the state only looks at all sales, residential, condos, and waterfront. They don't break it down any further than that. So when we do this, we're just trying to perfect something, uh, to a greater degree than the, than the state does, which is all good. So what, what I'm hoping that we'll do is hire KRT to come in and work with me to do this equalization. We won't visit any properties. It'll be, we'll sit at our desk and computers, and we'll work on these ratio studies. And we'll, we'll take all the data that we have and, and bring everybody to where, um, where they need to be, to make them all equal. Part two, and, part two is that we'll do this every couple of years. Because the danger here, as we drift downward, is that when we do adjust things, it'll be such a huge jump that it causes pain for everybody.
Yes, right.
And, and, um, if, if we, every few years, do a little tweak, then we'll be able to keep up with it. Sometimes the values will go down, sometimes they'll go up, depending on what the market is doing. But it will keep everybody on an even keel, and it won't make for huge jumps whenever we do adjustments.
So is this something that KRT? So at what point are we locked in and we're just not going to get everything we would like to get from the state in terms of the, like, the 78%?
Great question. So every year, I have to fill out a form where I declare what our ratio is going to be. The state, though, uh, they have their own ideas. They know we're at 88%. So they're not going to let me declare, you know, anything better than 95%. I think that's where the math comes in, right? So unless I check off a box that says we're going to do a correction. And, and then they allow, they allow me to certify at 100. I prove it to them later that that's what we achieved, or whatever it is we certify at. But as long as we get to 92, I can certify at 100.
Right.
Right.
So we're not totally screwed by having, being at the 88%. There's still a way to?
Exa, exactly. No, we can, if we do it this winter, we can save it.
Okay.
If we, if we don't, if we don't do it by April 1st, uh, by, by the time we commit taxes next year, if we don't do it by then, then we're locked into, to 88%.
Does it sort of pay for itself then?
Exactly. Exactly. Yep.
So I see there are a couple of, maybe, and maybe you'll get to those, Carrie, I don't want to rush you, but it looks like there were a couple of different packages, if you will, of what could be provided from KRT.
So, so I put into the capital improve, improvement, um, exercise that we did, that we save up for a full measure, what's called a measuring list revaluation, where we go to every house, we measure it, we knock on the door, and look at the insides, and we get a full accounting. Because people, whether through, um, being insidious or, or not knowledgeable of a building permit, people build things that we don't know about. We capture what we can, but we don't know what we don't know. And so you do a measuring list, and that's a full-blown, uh, revaluation. This, this statistical update thing is a fairly new invention, and it helps us tweak because rebals are kind of expensive. And this, and this helps us as an in-between thing. Uh, the last time we did a full measuring list was 2005.
And is that the full, is that the 160?
Yes.
If we were going to do a full?
Right.
Knock on the door, boots on the ground?
Exactly.
Get through every home?
Exactly.
Okay.
So they offered us a few different options. So that was, that was one.
And the statistical revaluation?
Excuse me?
Then the next one, I think, was the statistical revaluation?
Yes. Now, in that one, we would actually visit properties, but we wouldn't really get out of the car. We did this in Camden, um, in 2019, and we visited every property. We did a, a windshield inspection, uh, which was basically adjusting grading condition. Uh, and then we did the, the computer work when we, when we got back in. We also, we also adjusted neighborhood boundaries, uh, because those kinds of things shift. And by neighborhood, we don't mean the traditional neighborhood, like, you know, um, this, this square blockage. It's, it's all a economic profile. And, and so we did that kind of adjusting as well. So that's more, um, requires a lot more hours, a lot more manpower. And, and while nice, I didn't think that it, especially if we commit to, um, saving money for a, a revale in the future, I, I really didn't think it was necessary.
So that, in that one, you would still be able to see, like, if people put on additions or something and had just forgotten to tell you?
Yes and no.
Okay.
If we couldn't see it from the windshield, no.
Oh, right.
If it's in the backyard.
Right, exactly.
Can you do a walk-around?
Exactly.
No, I've heard this, and this is sort of interesting. I guess residents have the right to say, no, you can't.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. However.
To me, creates a little bit of an inequity.
Well, yes and no.
Okay.
Because if they say no, um, then I can come up with a value and they can't dispute it. It's, it's, it's called, it's, it's, there's a section in, in Title 36, 706A, that allows me to make proper inquiries. And if they're not answered or answered honestly, they can't appeal my determination. So somebody's certainly free not to let us in, but then I make them aware of this, and they can continue not. And, and I don't, you know, I don't, um, react in a punitive manner, but nor do I react in a generous manner.
Right. And you can take into account the neighborhood or the quality of the outside construction to determine what the quality.
One time I was knocking on a door, and somebody said to me, my lawyer, a friend of mine who's a lawyer told me not to let you in because you'll see my gold doorknobs and and leather wallpaper. So I whipped out my pen and said, gold doorknobs, leather wallpaper, what else am I not going to see?
Okay, what else am I not going to see? Okay.
And so then we, we go down, uh, the, the $40,000, um, uh, package. Also has, has more analysis, uh, in it. Uh, but, but truthfully, you know, K, KRT did this for us in 2017. And they, and they, the reason we, our numbers are so good right now is because they did such a good job that everything is still very tight. And, and I don't think we need to spend, uh, anything more than that, um, à la carte option, just to get us through, uh, and back up into a certification that we're pleased with.
And so that's the last portion of this memo here, okay?
Yes, it is.
Yep.
And, and, and they were, you know, they were estimating, um, conservative, conservatively, so that we didn't get any shocks, but I've spoken with them. And I, that, 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 um, uh, 15 days of analysis and table review, I really think is just five. And I've spoken with them, they don't disagree with me.
Yep. So that might bring us 40,000, that would bring the 40,000.
It brings us down to 20-something. I don't remember what the number was anymore. It's in my memo.
24.5.
24.5. And what I did was, I maxed out, I took their estimates for the hearing, um, hearing amounts. Because, I mean, one thing that I've, I've learned through pain and sorrow is to go very slow on, on that part of the process. Make sure everybody's heard. Give everybody a chance to come and talk about their valuation and whether they're happy or unhappy with it. And, and also, you know, one thing about this too is the valuation may go up, but the mill rate can correspondingly come down.
Right, and if everybody's going up.
Right. The people that go up the most will pay more in taxes. The people that go up the least won't, probably pay less in taxes. That's just how it works. And, um, so that's part of the education process. And I, and I like participating in the hearings, uh, because then, you know, I, I know so many of the people that, that come in. It's, it's easier to talk to them, it's easier for them to talk about it when it's a familiar face.
Sure.
And so one of the things that, that I did with the, um, update that we did in 2015, and I did the same thing in Camden in 2017, was I participated in the whole process, which I'm told is unusual, but it seems to me that makes good sense. Uh, that way, when it's over, I own it, you know, and I don't have to ask somebody what happened, how did this decision get made? They didn't make any major decision without my input. And at the hearings, I was at most of them. And, and it's, it's good, and it helps carry forward.
So in summary, then, what you're saying is, bringing these people, they help you go through all the data we have, and you equitably adjust all the assessed values to be at 92-ish percent?
Exactly right. But let's talk about that for a second. So the big debate, and I told you that assessors probably don't make the best economists. Is this a bubble? Is this a real market? I mean, what's going to happen, uh, when COVID finally goes? And, and I've talked to many people, and I've read many articles, and most people don't think it's a bubble, but think it will plateau or maybe come down a little bit. But nobody thinks it's going to crash, which probably means it will. But, but the point is that, that I think we should adjust to the lowest level possible, 92, 93%, something like that. If the market stays hot, it'll come down again in a year or two, we can tweak it back up. If the market does correct in a negative way, we have plenty of room before we need to worry about anything. You know, we, we just don't want to get above 100%.
Right.
I would agree with that. I, I don't want to leave any money on the table from the state.
Right.
That would benefit the town.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. We're making all right here.
So my other question, just out of, these are curiosity questions on my part. Do you know how we stand based on other towns or the rest of the state?
Oh, sure.
On these numbers, are we comparable?
Yes, yes, we are. It's, it's, um, I, I talk to other assessors all the time. We have a listserv. Everybody is, is experienced, which, which is one of the things that amazes me, is this is not just a coastal town thing. It's, Mark and I were talking about up north earlier. This is happening everywhere.
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 That's what I expected. I was just curious to see if we were comparable to, like, everybody as it is. And is that 10% that the state gives a fixed number in the constitution, or is that some?
It's either in statute or in constitution, but it's, it's a fixed number for sure.
I'm wondering if in an instance like this, like, the state may not need to reevaluate.
They don't like, they don't like to do that.
No, they don't, but.
It's like, it's like trying to move April 1st.
Yeah.
There are some things that are sacrosanct, and that's just.
What, uh, what price bracket are you seeing the, the biggest inconsistencies with valuation versus sale?
Say the middle, say $250,000 to 400? That's, that's just nuts. I mean, a, a house will go, a house at that price range, assuming that it's in decent enough condition, will go on the market today, and it'll be pending in a couple of days. And that was true when the pandemic started, and it's still true.
I was talking with a realtor not long, about a week ago. And they were saying that people don't even care to come see the houses.
Right, right.
Sight unseen. Here's the cash.
No inspections.
Right.
Sight unseen.
Exactly.
And my friends are getting crazy offers on a house that they only bought a couple of years ago, three years ago.
Yeah.
Or a great town. Who wouldn't want to move here, right?
Exactly.
That's right.
Yeah. No, and, and you know, a house like that comes on the market, let's say, $325,000, where I walk outside my office and I take an over-under bet. And, and it is never in excess of four days. It's just, it's just incredible.
Right.
Yeah, and are they, I guess, that's sort of a related question in terms of who's buying these? Are they investors?
Not around, not around here. I, I see some of that in Camden for sure.
Yeah.
But, but not around here. They seem, and, and it's funny, it's, while there are, there is a contingent of out-of-state, it's, it's a lot of people in-state doing, making these moves around.
And people with families and wanting to really join the community.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would say I see that more than the other way around.
Yeah.
So Carrie, no, this was just from discussion. We don't need, we don't have a vote or anything for this, okay. All right. Any other questions for Carrie?
So do you need anything else? How does this work then? Do we come back with a formal proposal?
John, do we need anything?
I don't think we need anything.
Okay.
We're just discussing.
And you can go forward without our approving it. Is that what that means?
That's, right, that was what we had discussed, I think, was that we were, right, all we needed is really to have the sense of where we stand on the issues of ratio and the like, right?
Exact, exactly. I mean, we, you know.
And you don't need select court approval?
We'd like you on board.
Well, right, yes, yes.
Yeah. As, as someone who sat in your chair in 2005 and, and the preceding years, you will receive questions and comments about the work that's about to go under, you know, begin.
Right, sure.
And it's, it's really important, this is the beginning of a conversation that will take many years, and it's a, it's such a, it's so important because it's where we get our revenue, this is, this is what we do, you know? And, uh, those conversations about equity and proportionality and all, that's really what this is all about. And, uh, so, getting ahead of these things the best we can.
Just a question, just because, you know, we've got questions. You know, we were criticized recently about the, uh, RES property and choosing a certain company over a different company, et cetera, et cetera. Is there a bid policy that we currently have that would require us, because of this dollar value, to, and I understand we've used the company before, but I don't want somebody to come back and say, you didn't go out to bid on this, it exceeded your bid policy.
Right, right.
Just asking. And in turn, that's something for you to chew on, I'm just saying. I know we have a bid policy, I don't recall what the dollar value is that requires us to go out to bid, and maybe Megan has it on the top of her head.
Uh, under twenty-five thousand, it would be.
Twenty-four eight.
That's convenient.
That's pretty close to twenty-four eight, I just want, I just wanna be, I just wanna be okay if somebody asks that question.
It's a very valid point.
Yeah, and, and bidding aside, let me address this part, that there are, there are only two companies that are.
And, and I'm okay with it, because we've used them before, but I just wanna be prepared should it arise.
And I, and I agree, I think it's worth bringing up, and, and I just wanna let you know that if we put it out to bid, two companies would bid on it, Vision and KRT. And with KRT, we get the principals of the company working with us. I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, no.
And in, and in Vision, we get employees who might, might have just been hired or whatever.
And KRT is familiar with us too.
Yeah, and that's it, I'm good with it, I'm just.
I get you.
Trying to be prepared for the question to arise.
It's a good question.
Absolutely. Yeah, I agree with that.
Thanks for taking care of this, Carrie.
Yes, thank you, Carrie.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for looking for the most economical solution and for explaining it.
Unfortunately, I love to talk about this, but I put people to sleep.
And it's made it a lot easier, because when I'm reading through this, I'm like, okay, I sorta get it, but I'm like, okay, well, why don't we just do this? And that's kind of what you're saying we could do, is just adjust. So it makes sense now. And I, you know, I think that helps the residents of the town understand it too, so they don't just think it's some.
And like, and like John said, residents are gonna come to you with questions, so you come to me anytime, I'll be happy to talk about it more.
I mean, we, what we were talking about today is, I asked questions that I could ask of, of the town that I'm from, and they're at eighty-one percent. And the last time they did a revale was nineteen ninety-five.
Wow.
So, there's a lot of action gonna happen up the coast, so.
Right. It's, it's, this is going on all over, I mean, that, you know, that from the big cities to the smallest towns. They're finding themselves in the same situation, and in some places, they're very happy with letting the ratio go down, but e- even if we were, we're still under an obligation to make it equal.
Right.
And, and that disparity has to be reined in. Okay, thank you, Will.
All right, thank you, Carrie, appreciate the update.
Carrie.
All right, with that, that is, um, our last discussion item. Now need to move into, um, acting as wastewater commissioners, so can I get Mark?
I move the board, exit as select board and go into wastewater commissioners.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, we are now in wastewater commission as of six fifty-four. All right, John?
Okay, well, uh, I'm back again to talk about wastewater. I think I've done this every, every meeting I've been here. So, just to update all of you, um, the, we presented the town of Camden with our, uh, our offer for revised interlokal agreement. And they have, uh, rejected our, our, uh, our offer.
With, it seems like an unwillingness to even really negotiate, is that your sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think that they feel as though the price is, their price is their price. And that they have, they feel as though that we are a, a user like every other user in their system. And as a result, um, they feel as though we should pay the same price as every other user.
Our experts are telling us that's not how it should work, I'm just trying to verify for the public.
Right, that's for us.
Right.
Right, and, and also, we pay, you know, we manage our own system.
Right.
So from the other side of, and just to kind of outline, you know, for everyone, we, we manage our own system, we pay a company to work with us, though our employee has worked for us for twenty-plus years, twenty-five plus years, uh, or the employee who works here, drives around the town truck, but on behalf of this company, uh, we, we pay that company to oversee the, the operation of that system. Uh, we pay for the chemicals to operate that system. When we had issues, you know, during this, this recent event, we sent that information into, um, the good folks in Augusta. It's a very different scenario. We should not pay for upgrades in the town of Camden that have nothing to do with the town of Rockport system. And that's really, I think, the difference, is they don't really see, want to have that conversation to draw those distinctions. They view us as another user, and, and that's as far as that conversation will go. And, and it's unfortunate, uh, and certainly many of you have been on emails that I've, you know, shared and, and conversations, certainly we've all had individually with people in Camden and people on the select board and town administration. You know, we've had a thirty-year successful relationship working with, um, our, our sewer system here in the village, connected to Camden's wastewater treatment plant, uh, it's served us well. Certainly not without, you know, issues and, and just happen with, with any sewer system. However, uh, you know, at this point in time for the relationship with Camden to fall apart, I think is, is regrettable. And I think that personally speaking, as, as the person in this seat, uh, I would advise you to have been able to work out an agreement with the town of Camden. It, it's, it, nonsensical would be the word in my mind of why I, why this decision is going the way it is, however it is where it is. And, and I would, you know, just, I think it's time for the town of Rockport to at least look at its options. Um, as you all know, and everyone who's driven Route One in the last six months knows, we're in the process of laying a sewer line that will, uh, run to Glen Cove, presumably the potential of connecting our two systems. We will begin conversations with the city of Rockland, because our sewer system in Glen Cove will require an agreement. But, and that's where this, this, um, item comes before you.
Just.
Yep, go ahead.
No, I just, you know, and just to be a little more blunt on that. At least eight or so times, we have been reaching out to our counterparts, different board members, the manager, and they've said consistently, we don't wanna negotiate a new contract, we think what you're paying is fair, see you later, have a nice day. And at one meeting, they didn't even bother showing up. And it's just unbelievable. So.
And what is hurting is our, what is hurting is our users. We have the highest rate, or we did have the highest rate, in the state of Maine. And we, and we gave some relief this last time around, because we made a decision as a board, or as wastewater commissioners, I should say, we made the decision that we were going to pay a lower rate based upon what our experts had advised us.
And that all became through a process of an eye-to-eye evaluation, because
Correct.
there were spikes, and we found a lot of, uh, things that needed to be corrected, we've corrected them. And through that process, there was a piece of machinery that was reading inappropriately, uh, wrong numbers, and we've done all those corrections, and through that, the numbers that we came up with through our professional, um, you said, you're paying way too much. And we're buying trucks and culverts and.
And chemicals and everything else to support what we're sending.
And then we went out and worked with, to find our own study of what are other agreements look like. Perhaps that's not the way that the relationship works elsewhere.
Right.
And time after time after time, we found agreements with a number of communities banded, banded together to try to find a way to solve wastewater issues without everyone building their own wastewater treatment plant. That's really the relate, the situation we find ourselves in, the situation the select board found themselves in the late eighties and early nineties. And in those instances, they found a relationship that built an interlokal agreement that looked almost exactly like the one that we were proposing. So, I, I echo, you know, everything that's said here. Um, we're, we're not on the ledge here of what we're asking for, it was really in keeping. Town of Camden has the right to do as they wish, it's their treatment plant.
Their system, right.
But the, the reality is that if we look around, um, and again, according to the experts that we've been working with, it's very likely that using that high rate that we've been paying for our users, there's a potential we could have a savings and in building our own plant, that we own, that we manage and we operate. And, you know, that's obviously what a study would find, and, you know, not to get, put the cart before the horse. But that's the idea, I think, going into this, is that having control of our own destiny. The ability to work together and build collaborations by community makes all the sense in the world here in two thousand twenty-one. We, it works in instances, we certainly have, we have assessing agreement, we have police chief, we have, you know, schools. I mean, we, it's, right, we have the fire department, everybody, we're working together on so many levels. It's not working in this case at this moment, city of Rockland may have a different conversation for us. Uh, but at the very least, it's prudent, I think, for this board and for the town to look at our future of what happens if we do this ourself. And, and then also the issue of Route ninety, which previously we discussed, to put those two issues together.
I mean, and I think that's important, I mean, we want to grow, we want to grow our user rate. And I know Camden has had challenges with their system and, and has even, I think, told us that they can't take more, or, you know, so I think that it, unfortunately, has come time, and it, we know it's expensive, we know there are grants, which I think is an important piece. So I don't want people to think that we're not thinking of this thoughtfully. I mean, at the end of the day, we cannot have our residents have sewer bills that are higher than their taxes. And that's what it is right now. I mean, we gave them some relief, but in the end, those bills are big. And we can't have someone who's paying, Megan, what would you say, sometimes there, sometimes those bills are six or eight hundred dollars a quarter, right?
Oh, easily, somewhere in the thousand.
I mean, somewhere in the thousand dollars a quarter, they're paying more in sewer bills than they're paying for their taxes.
Crazy.
And that's crazy. And it's, and it's disappointing that we can't come to an agreement, because I think we've tried, we haven't just thrown a number out there. We've engaged our experts a number of times, we've asked them point blank, are you sure this is the number? Poor Nate has come back to us how many times to validate this is the right number. And I think that that's, that's the important piece, and, and it is, it's putting us in a position where we do have to look at alternatives, and maybe that's okay. Maybe it's been a long time coming, and we just had this agreement, and we just kept going with the agreement. But now we've gotta consider what are our options long-term.
Absolutely.
And especially, I mean, I think, as we've all talked about, you know, Route ninety is a great option if we wanna grow, if we want, if we want affordable housing, if we want an opportunity to increase our, our tax base, that's where people are going to build, in, out in that area, and they're not going to do it with multiple septic systems, so.
As long as we can keep the roads in one place.
As long as we can keep the roads together, right, exactly. So, all right, carry on, carry on. What are, what are, what are our options you're, uh, proposing here?
Yeah, so, uh, we, as, as you all know, you voted at the last meeting to rescind your prior agreement as we found out that there were difficulties using Woodward and Curran as our provider of the, uh, this preliminary engineering report and study. As a result, uh, we found a, a different vendor, Libra Solutions, um, which are based out of the Bangor area. Their background is working with Summit Engineering, and, and they've, they've, uh, put together a package here, which will not only handle, uh, our initial request, which was to handle the Route ninety extension, but to also couple that with, uh, the additional potential of wastewater treatment plant in Rockport.
And by doing, and by having them do this study, that puts us in a position where we can apply for these grants, right?
That's exactly right.
So we couldn't use Woodward and Curran, because that we would be exempt from being able to apply based upon our relationship with them already, right?
Right, so that was, so the, the idea is to, to put this, this plan in place. If you were to take action to accept this tonight, uh, the plan would be in our hands in February, this coming February, which will provide us about a month or so time to prepare our EDA grant application.
So that's like a deadline in March of some sort, okay.
Exactly, so that's our deadline to be part of that process, and then move on from there. So, again, there's, there's a lot of ifs, if.
Sure, right.
If, if, if you feel as though it's, it's a worthwhile endeavor, if the, you know, the, the, uh, the finances and the, and the flows and everything works to such a degree that, that obviously you all are of, of, um, approving of that sort of direction. But that's exactly right, you, you'd be able to move ahead in March, get some sort of concept ahead, moving ahead, and hopefully, you know, we would have some answers in the summer. So, that process unfortunately is not been as clear as we would have liked it to be, the EDA process.
Okay.
Fair to say.
How did we find Libra?
Libra, um, well, we, it's exhaustive. Uh, we called local engineering firms, we called, you know, out of the area, you know, in-state, where's the in-state? But Libra was, uh, a firm that has kind of gone into this business a little bit more recently. And, uh, you know, they've worked with Woodward and Curran on other projects in the past, uh, so they're familiar with how they work. And, you know, obviously, being able to access and having regular dialogue with the information that we have is, yeah, absolutely. You know, we worked with, you know, a lot of the local, Gartley and, um, you know, Mark Ingraham and some of the local engineers, but we really need to find somebody who had, uh, the ability to look at this document and, and feel good, you know, obviously, in this area. And that's just not something that our local engineers are really comfortable with working with. So, uh, this is a big enough firm that, that, um, they're, they're able and prepared to, uh, to work in an area that's, uh, obviously, you know, we're talking about ten million dollars, uh, potentially for the Route ninety extension, and, you know, another ten, I, you know, the victim is a cost of between three and ten million for a potential wastewater treatment plant, when you discussed this in the spring. So, you know, twenty million dollars is a pretty large project, so you need to make sure you have somebody who's, who's ready to, to tackle that, and.
And that's.
Libra was, yeah.
So where does this money come from?
Go ahead, Megan.
You knew that, you knew that was coming, Megan.
So, this PR will serve two purposes. With the Route one sewer extension project, we, uh, applied for principal loan forgiveness. And part of the contingency on accepting that principal loan forgiveness was that we develop a fiscal sustainability plan for our sewer system. That came with fifty thousand dollars from the state, in which we had to match fifty thousand dollars to. Twenty-five thousand dollars in this year's capital improvement plan, twenty-five thousand dollars in next. For a total of a hundred thousand dollars to go into this fiscal sustainability plan. A lot of that work for that plan is being done in this PER. So this PER, the information that we developed for this, for the EDA grant, we can then convert to the fiscal sustainability plan for our principal loan forgiveness. So in order to pay for this, we are gonna use that FSP money that we have set aside and put it towards this PER.
And I'd also add, of the sixty-four thousand six hundred, twenty thousand dollars of that is, uh, exploration of ledge, uh, related along the side. So, we had ten thousand dollars when we were dealing with the, the Route ninety process alone, now it's doubled. So, we will use it, given how Route one has gone, we'll use it, but I just wanted to clarify, it's, it's twenty, and then there's twen, you know, forty, forty-four six, I suppose, that's, that's really part of the study specific.
Okay.
And we had also, in the agreement that you rescinded, was forty thousand dollars for the original PER, which did not include a treatment plant. So, one reasonably would think that the costs would have essentially doubled, because we're doubling the work, and the cost didn't double.
Right, yeah. Which is good, thank goodness, right?
So we have a hundred thousand from this fiscal sustainability plan, so we'll use some portion of that, the sixty-two.
And the, the remaining amount will go to bolster the FSP for the rest of the system.
Okay, so whatever's not covered by.
Whatever's, okay, right. All right, other questions for Megan?
No, I'm sorry we have to do it, but I think it's the right thing to do for the sewer users.
I agree.
Well, and, and the sewer users and the growth of the town. Well, and, and the sewer users and the growth of the town.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Route one will blossom, maybe not next year, but within the next five or ten years, so will ninety.
Yeah, if we can get both of those on board and growing, you know, within reason. Reasonable growth.
Right.
Not overkill.
Yeah, I did see the new development that, you know, the planning board looked at on Route one and they're gonna put in septic fields there. So I was disappointed to see that. That's what this is for.
Yes, well, maybe we should, maybe they should reach out and say, you know, this is available now.
They knew it. They acknowledged to the planning board that they weren't, just weren't gonna use the, I'm sure it's cost, but it's very, um, frustrating, I guess.
Sewer ordinance needs some work.
That, that's what I'm thinking, because I know in Colorado, you don't have that option.
You don't have an option. If it's available to use it.
Don't give you the option, even if it's been retro.
Look at this rainstorm. How many septic fields are probably just flooding and?
Yeah, no, this is, yeah, that's, that's on the radar. I, Ryan and I have been, that conversation about that particular re- you know, and, and there will be another application, there'll be others, but if we're going to build sewer-
Yeah, here we have. We've, we've done what we thought developers would want. And they've just said, oh, never mind, you know, just do what we always do.
Aren't they required to still pay a fee, like, if, whether they connect or not because it's passing through?
Yes.
They'll be assessed the debt service fee proportional to what everybody is because the access is available to them.
So they don't pay a user fee? They pay the debt service?
They'll be responsible for the debt service.
Because it's available to them and they're not using it.
And all, I think it's seven divisions. So all seven lots will be charged it.
Perfect.
Gotcha.
So they're still paying something.
Right.
They're just-
And then they have maintenance of their own.
Spending money on septic systems at fifteen thousand dollars a block when they could connect for two or whatever each connection is, right?
Right. What is it to connect?
I move the board to approve the contract with Libra Solutions to develop a preliminary engineering report and study for a new wastewater treatment plan and a sewer extension along Route ninety.
Second.
All right, any other discussion?
Did you, it says wastewater treatment plan, but we mean plant, right?
Plant, yeah.
The T.
Plant, yes.
Oh, yes, plant.
Yes.
I guess you gotta have a plan to go with the-
Well, true, it is a plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Plants have the plan.
Plants still works, perfect.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor? Thank you. Eighty-seven twelve. Okay, with that, we need a motion to go back into regular session.
Move the board exit wastewater commissioners back into regular session.
Second.
Any discussion? Mark, do you have discussion?
He's ready to vote.
You're anxious.
I didn't think that-
All in favor?
I didn't think there would be.
He's ready to adjourn.
He's ready, my goodness. All right, thank you.
I want to discuss.
Seven thirteen. Um, all right, so the last thing we have on the agenda today is if anyone has any Select Board liaison reports. Mark, do you want to start?
I gotta, I gotta tell you, the other night, John, thanks for being there for the, the EMS. You know, I don't have my own private Zoom account, so I tried to go on through the towns that we still had. Didn't work. And, um, long story short is, that's it, no.
Uh, EMS committee, uh, we met virtually and it went, um, it was really just an information session for, because I guess the committee hasn't met in maybe two years or something like that.
Spent a long time, yeah.
So, yeah, we were updated about, uh, where we were at as far as, um, times for, uh, ambulances, whether it be here or close in Rockport.
Response times?
I'm sorry, response times, yeah. What I found a little disturbing was out of a fleet of four vehicles, soon to be five, uh, ambulances, at any given time, they have two on duty, which sounds fine, but one of those could be pulled away for four and a half hours for a transfer, and this happens quite often. And so at any given time, for Hope, for Rockport, for Lincolnville, and, um, Camden, sorry, Camden on the line, yeah, there's only one ambulance. So that's, uh, that's a little disturbing.
Yeah, because then we have to pay for mutual aid, right? Is that how that works, John? Is that we then have to pay Rockland?
Right.
Is it usually Rockland that responds at that point?
Usually Rockland.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we are, they, they did show some numbers that showed what, what percentage of calls are, uh, mutual aid calls given a given town as opposed to the remainder of the, the county.
Did you, did you guys all get a chance to see the numbers that they provided? I don't know, was it everybody?
I haven't seen them.
Yeah, you, you might want to, because, I mean, I, I think when you look at the numbers, with respect to each towns and everything, we're well within our, what we have by a contract, but, uh-
No, yeah, I mean, the contract is, they're definitely within the contract.
Yeah.
The question is, I mean, it's only for a year, so do we want to start making moves in another direction?
Well, you know, and that brings up a good point because we should be, if I remember correctly, talking about this January first, not waiting until June twenty-eighth.
Right.
Um, and there are things along the lines of, I mean, they're virtually working for us unless they're doing a transfer. And, you know, I hate to be the Grinch, but when they're going to help pick somebody up, um, at a, um, at a, um, company in another town.
Right.
Not to pick on any one particular one, they're, they're not getting paid.
Right.
And I don't know whether we can, because they're working for us.
Right.
They're not transferring anybody. I don't know whether we can say, hey, you need to start billing for your time out because
Right.
you know, you're working for us. Unless you're transferring, you're working for us. And, I mean, it's just, and, and most of these places, listen, I understand, they, they are telling their people, we don't want you lifting someone because we don't want you to get hurt. Well, what does that do to our people? I mean, not ours, but Northeast. I mean, they're just as apt to get hurt. And, and it, it's unnecessary, I mean.
Chief Beasley has, uh, dealt with this, obviously, constantly, and he has some interesting ideas. I think maybe an agenda item to invite him to speak to us about his view of the situation might be a good idea.
And I think the regionalization, again, you know, sort of using that as like-
Yeah, exactly. Yes, yes.
Do we each need our own ambulance if that's the direction we end up going?
Well, yeah, and that we own it. Yep, exactly, just like you.
Any other updates, John, for other committees? Denise, anything?
Yeah, Parks Committee is, um, continuing to sort of, um, assess existing parks and what, what they'd like to see. Working on getting budget information together, working with Mike on that. Um, park benches are something we just feel like there's a real need for more park benches in the parks, so we've got some ideas on that. Um, so they're doing good stuff. Legacy Rockport, the Vulcan Locomotive is
Yes.
Looking, um, well, it's being worked on.
Yeah, right.
And, um, Legacy Rockport has its own website. People can donate to support that effort. Uh, the Lime Kilns held up really well with all that rain.
Nice, yes.
The retaining wall didn't fall down.
Yes, thank goodness.
We're on a good, good track there. Uh, Library Committee met and, um, the pumpkin painting in the park was, over sixty kids there.
Yes, yeah, part of the great success, yeah.
Huge success and lots of, just good things happening at the library. Um, McCad, I, I thought I'd add these two.
Yeah, please do.
So McCad had a retreat, met last week and then, two weeks ago and then last Friday, um, to really start to figure out wh- what they are. I think one thing that did come out of it is I think they're gonna rename themselves.
Okay.
Because they do planning and economic development, and I know we, I've been certainly confused by that term, economic development, and yet ninety percent or eighty percent of what they do is planning. Um, so they're gonna be a, you know, it's a MACOG, I guess, maybe Midcoast Council of Governments, which is the more, what they used to be, and actually Orion's paycheck comes from MACOG. I mean, that's still a going entity that pays everyone. So the, it's just created this confusion about thinking their mission is solely economic development, and then you're wondering, why aren't they doing more on economic development? So I think there's some good things happening, a lot of input from all over. The one on Friday was ver, was in-person, the other one was virtual, so. Anyway, I think that's something to keep an eye on and, you know, we're just really happy to have Orion in our office helping us for days a week. That's huge.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Uh, MIDC, the Internet Development Corporation that, uh, Rockport is a member of, we're, um, you know, I don't know if we're gonna get any money from the county, so we're looking at some other avenues for, um, sources of money through EDA and maybe some other, um, state grant money.
Um, the one op, update I'll give is the Comprehensive Plan Committee. They're doing a lot of great work. They actually have an event here on November ninth. Six thirty, five thirty? Uh, I can't remember the time, maybe six. I can't remember the time, but there are signs up. We really want to have, um, citizen input. Um, they are planning on doing a couple of other sessions at different times. Um, but really, it's an opportunity for people to come together, you know, answer some questions, talk openly and provide, uh, feedback. So, um, if you hear of anybody who's interested, by all means, make sure they're aware so that they can participate.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I, I think it will be, I think it'll be nice and I think, uh, you know, I hope they have a, a good turnout. I unfortunately am out of town, but, um, they've done a lot of great work. Orion has been leading that for us as well, which is great. And there is a, a great committee of folks.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, okay, perfect, on November ninth.
Yep.
Here at the Opera House. Um, and I think that's the only update I have.
Yeah, I don't really have much because we did the Harbor Committee and, and the Recreation Committee and they ended up on the same day at the same time.
Oh, okay, there you go.
It really, it got me out of loop, but I did go to the Harbor Committee and they've started their review of, uh, the process of, um, pricing for the-
Pricing for moorings.
Yeah, the moorings for the upcoming budget process and, uh, so we'll be seeing that eventually, as soon as they work out their numbers.
And that brings to mind the, when do our agreements, uh, come up again for the, the use of the fishermen's by the sale?
That I don't know.
Well, I- Well, I'm just, uh, you know, if, and, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, you know, about the, uh, yacht club too. I mean, when do those come up for conversation again?
Uh, the, the yacht club, I believe, is the summer of twenty twenty-three.
So another, yeah.
That one I did look up, but I, I didn't ask about the fishermen.
Well, that, I think we're probably due with that. You know, I think they get a pretty good deal, but it's nice to have them down there and keep them active, but on the other hand, they're chewing up some space.
That was discussed, but I don't remember what the timeframe was.
Did you talk about the, using the crane for the masts on that side of?
Uh, that was a brief conversation that came up in regards to location as to adding more floats. I believe so.
Because there is some concern that, you know, you've got people sitting on the benches, having picnics, and there's this crane swinging with this big mast.
Well, I mean, the other day, they were, they were taking the floats out and the guy brought his boom truck in to take masts out at the same time. They're saying they're doing, yeah, doing the dance and I'm going, my lunch is done?
I'm out of here. I don't know how to say it, but I'm not here.
Yeah, there were some discussions about all the activities going on and-
Yeah, and if you could have access to the other side, I think the crane, maybe for the ma, I don't know how it all-
Yeah.
There's, there's something-
They're still working that out in the upcoming plans, so.
Mark, did you have anything else? Or you were, no, you're good. All right, tomorrow, before we adjourn, tomorrow's voting.
Tomorrow's voting, eight to eight.
Eight AM, eight to eight, at the Richardson Room.
Richardson Room, come, you're entering in the Richardson Room.
And you're exiting out, so you're not going through the town office. You're going in, in and around, so. Eight AM, eight PM. All right, I think that is all that we have on, uh, our agenda for tonight. So any final thoughts or comments?
And our next Select Board meeting is the thirteenth then? We'll be back on a second Tuesday?
Yes, it should be the second Monday, thir-, no, December thirteenth. All right, with that, can we get a motion to adjourn?
I move the board to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor? And it is seven twenty-four.